...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of January 28, 2019. So moved. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is special reports. Mr. Lauer, I understand that we have a township residents who recently celebrated a milestone.
Yes, Mrs. Anne Gardner yesterday celebrated her 102nd birthday. And what I was hoping is with council's concurrence that we could issue a proclamation to be signed by the chairman of council honoring her on her 102nd birthday.
Sure. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Obviously seven zero, Mr. Lauer.
I would get it done quick.
Thank you, Mr. Arcuri.
As close to his birthday as possible.
Next item is presentation of recently appointed sergeant and corporal.
Thank you, council. Welcome to the public today. We have a brief ceremony to promote our newest promoties from the Peters Township Police Department. Before I do that, I just want to, for the benefit of the audience and for the promoties families who are here, just to read briefly a little bit of the history of the badge and what it means. Police badges are a representation of what once was the coat of arms displayed by knights. The coat of arms identified the nobility from which knights authority was derived. To this day, many organizations refer to the badge as a shield. The knight's coat of arms represented the kingdom and the knight represented the knight's authority, the knight's allegiance to justice, and the knight's chivalry. Much like the knights of those days, police are sworn to protect and serve. Police like knights are sworn to protect the weak, defend the defenseless, and to impartially preserve justice for all. As a supervisor, each of you have taken that next step in your career. You're no longer responsible for only yourself. Rather, you are responsible for the actions, excuse me, and inactions of your personnel under your command. By virtue of your acceptance of this promotion, you've accepted this responsibility and sworn to ensure the personnel under your command perform justly and work diligently to preserve peace and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to tell you a little bit about our first promotee. As the captains come forward. Corporal Andrew K. Green. Andrew currently resides with his wife Jennifer and their two children, Jackson and Addison, in North Sheraton Township. Corporal Green began his career in law enforcement with Cumberland Township Police in January of 2011. Corporal Green worked there until August of 2012, when he accepted a full-time position with the Peters Township Police Department. Corporal Green was officially promoted to corporal on January 13, 2019. Corporal Green. this opportunity by council, and they look forward to serving the residents of Peters Township for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Next item in our special reports is the road resurfacing plan update.
Okay, it's that time of year again, as council is aware. Usually in March, we try to bid out this summer's resurfacing program for an award at the first meeting in April. So I usually inundate council with road information. We don't have a road tour this year, so I figured I'd do it in this meeting.
Jay currently resides with his wife Darlene in Cecil Township.
So this year, we are on year number two of our three-year resurfacing plan.
Sergeant Davis began his career in law enforcement with the Sarsberry Township Police Department
So that's the plan you see on the screen, and I hope a copy was included in your docket.
in 1991. Sergeant Davis worked there until January of 1993, when he accepted a position with
So this is the plan that we pick our roads from generally.
Peters Township Police Department.
This is the pavement condition index.
Sergeant Davis was officially promoted to sergeant on January 13, 2019.
Obviously, other factors come into play, but we try to pick from this list whenever
Congratulations.
we can. Next slide, please, Paul. So this is just a road snapshot of our road system at this point. It's about 113 total miles. In the graph you see before you, basically what I wanted to point out is the red box there at the right hand of this, right side of the screen. These are roads over 15 years old. You'll see 30 percent of the road network at this point is over 15 years old. And that, as you're aware, is the budgetary number that we try to shoot for to resurface roads once every 15 years. I don't want to panic council with the graph. It's not as bad as it seems. You know, we shoot for the 15-year cycle. Reality is, we usually end up at about 18 years is the average age of the road by the time we resurface it. So the red bars there represent the road program that we've chosen this year. And you can see if you add up those bars over 15 years. We're planning to resurface about five and a half miles. So we're going to take a significant chunk of those over 15-year-old roads out with this year's resurfacing program. Next slide, please, Paul. So this is the program that we've chosen for this year. These are the candidates based on, you know, mainly pavement condition index, proximity of roads. We try to get groupings wherever we can to get a better price, less mobilizations, and so on. So we have a base bid and several alternates here on the program this year. Would like to point out that the average age of the roads on this year's resurfacing program is nearly 20 years. It's 19.9 years. So I'd like to think we got a lot of life out of the roads that we're resurfacing this year. In addition to the program that you see in front of you, of course, we will do the rejuvenator program again this year. We hope to rejuvenate 10 and a half miles of streets. We'll do our crack sealing program again. We plan to crack seal between six and seven miles, keep those routine maintenance practices up. And then finally, what I wanted to say was, in the fall of this year, we plan to have a road assessment done by a company called Roadbotics that was in the budget. We discussed it briefly. Basically, what that is, is it's a computerized system. It's a camera, it's a dashboard-mounted camera that takes pictures of the road, and this robotics company cranks it through a computer algorithm, and it's a very, you know, non-subjective way to look at road defects. So our three-year plan combined with the robotics assessment in the fall, you know, for next year, when we're on year three, we hope to really take both of those tools and best select our roads. And we have a robotics scan scheduled for this year and next year as well. A lot of our surrounding contemporary municipalities, like the Bethel Parks, Mount Lebanon, North Huntington, they're using this system. It's really a nice tool. So I just wanted to bring council up to speed on where we stand with the road network and our road program. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. That's it.
Could I just say thank you again for a lot of nice work? The only concern I had, I think this list looks fine, but I was a little concerned about Bauer Hill Road and how much that's deteriorating. Several potholes, the public works people were just out there over, on Friday, I think, last week. And the sides of the roads are getting a lot of ruts, a lot of potholes. And that goes from Beavout almost all the way down towards McCombs and Springdale. I'm not saying we need to pave that, add that, but I'm concerned about how rapidly that's.
It's on our radar screen. I would say that the part from maybe like Ivy Lane towards Beavout is the worst. And I don't know if it's so much rutting as it is just delaminating asphalt. You know, there are a lot of potholes, and it's something that I know that Joe and I have talked about, that to try to limp that road on for another few years, to try to do some like mechanized patching this year.
Well, it continues all the way down on past Walnut in front of where this town forums is being done. There's some pretty severe ruts there, and something needs to be looked at with the storm drains too, because they're puddling really badly. But no, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, whether that can be looked at in-house, perhaps.
Yep.
Any other member of council have any questions for Mr. Smith?
I miss the road tour. It had been a tradition, it had gone on for as long as I've been around, and when Mr. Lauer came on board, we were informed that it was no longer a prerequisite to our continued service.
Apparently, that was a prerequisite of the Silvestri administration.
It was, no, actually, it's a prerequisite under the second-class Township Code, and as long as the township's been a humble community, it has no obligation to do that. If council would choose the one to do the road tour, that's something we can accomplish.
Well, it's more than a road tour. It's just an opportunity for council members to go out and see what has transpired since the last time we crossed a lot of the roads. It's probably an occasion that would be the single time that I've been down some of these roads. But anyway, I do salute the.
It was a school bus that invaded torturous.
How many members of council feel that we should bring back the road tour?
I do.
Showing hands?
Yes.
Do you want to do that this spring?
Looks like four to three, we're going on a road trip.
Do you want to do that this spring?
Think so.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is.
Get a nicer bus.
We will do that too.
I'll pray to do this.
The next item on the agenda is the audience comments. If there's any member of the audience who would like to speak on a non-agenda item, you may do so for up to five minutes. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Just come forward, ma'am.
Hi, Ann Chaner, 123 Robinwood. It's just the meeting, the first meeting of this year at the reorganization meeting, there was a correspondence on the agenda, but it was never addressed at the meeting. And it was the correspondence from EQT about possible, and I can't remember if it was drilling or a drill site that concerned Pleasant View, and then it had Finleyville. So I was wondering why that was not addressed, and did you address it in executive session? Is that why?
No, what these are, and we receive these periodically, the, when a gas company intends to drill, they need to notify adjacent municipalities. And EQT enranged, so as to stay in compliance, notify well beyond the range in which they're required to do this. So if you watch periodically, you will see those notices and correspondence. For the most part, they're just that. It's a notice that something's occurring outside of our community as opposed to inside our community.
Is it an indication that they'll be drilling laterally under the township?
No, it's not necessarily that. It depends on where it is. When we have drill pads where we understand that, in fact, that drilling is extending into the township, we make special note of that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? Just come forward and state your name and address, sir.
My name is Rocco Violi, 201 Linwood Avenue, and I'm here to request that the council would give permission to the maintenance department to, I live on a semi-private road, and I would like some assistance during extreme inclement weather. Linwood Avenue runs from Valley Brook Road, I'm sorry, Hidden Valley Road down over towards Federuch, if you know where that is, and it crosses over the trail there. It's my understanding that the township has contacted Google Maps to, you would not believe the traffic that comes on that road. It's amazing. Last winter, one of the ambulances was following Google Maps and ended up on our road in the ditch. And Mr. Pasquini, who has a cement contractor yard up at the top of the hill, and I had to get that ambulance out of there. They were on their way to assist someone, I'm not sure. But I'm just asking for a little assistance for some safety reasons. It crosses over the trail there. I understand the policy on maintenance, but I'm not asking for much. I've been here for 40 years, I've never asked a township for much of anything. So just would like you to consider that.
The challenge is that this is a private road. This is not the only private road in Peters Township. Our policy with regard to private roads is that when there is an emergency, in fact, we just had this with an individual who didn't understand that she had a shared driveway, that it wasn't a township road. When there is an emergency, if we are called, we will go out and take care of that situation. But what we don't do as a matter of course is to provide winter maintenance on private roads. So that, I mean, that's really kind of the position where we are. Mr. Violi had asked me to talk to Mr. Silvestri because his understanding of what our policy was, was different than mine. And when I talked to Michael, he confirmed my understanding that, in fact, if there's an emergency, we are to address that, but not routine winter maintenance.
What do you consider an emergency?
If there's a need for an ambulance, if there's a need for any emergency service provider, in the case of last week, we had an individual who had a child who had seizures, who needed to get medicine, and the FedEx truck would not go up this shared driveway. So we took care of that. But, you know, as I explained to that person, we will not do that on a routine basis because it's not a public street.
What about the trail being down there? Isn't there trail parking down there? I mean, shouldn't we be plowing that, just to the trail at least, so that people can?
And that's up to council, if you want to begin piling on.
I'm not saying every time it snows, but I mean, if you get six inches or something like that, you know, like some kind of severe inclement weather.
Is it able to be plowed without, I mean, I know that it goes down over the hill. I haven't been one of the people.
It is one of the roads I've been on more than once, though.
So what do you think about the ability to maintain that, Mr. Lewis?
Are you asking for a shout? Yeah, I'm not. I'm just asking for a little bit of help when the weather gets extremely bad.
So snow, snowplow?
Right, right. And I also, concerned also.
On paving or?
No, 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 none of that, no, sir.
That road is like a Burma road.
And in fact, when we have, on one occasion, have plowed in that area, we've damaged a truck. So again, because of the condition of the road. So if council would like us to maintain that, we can do that.
Well, why don't you put it on the bus tour?
I was just going to ask.
And then we can see it.
We can do that.
And then make an educated determination.
I would be curious whether we get a bus.
You better get a four-wheel drive bus, maybe.
Well, you know what, may I say, the road is, been maintained by us, obviously, and it's not as bad as you think. But I was telling you, well, come down and take a look on the bus tour, but you would.
It's been a while, I used to use it as a shortcut, it goes now.
And many others also. But, and once again, is it my understanding that the township also owns property down there? Is that correct, Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
So, you know, there is some liability issues there as well. I mean, I've seen moms with baby carriages crossing through there even during the crazy weather. I'm just fearful that someday, somebody, something tragic's going to happen there, and it's going to be too late.
What would you classify as a situation where you would want us to do plowing?
Well, I have a four-wheel drive vehicle. If I can't get home in that, then I would say that I'd need, would like to be able to get home and, at that point, and I.
That's one way.
Right. And, you know, I'm not the type to call for, you know, like on a day like today, no big deal, you know, but when it gets really bad. That's all I'm asking. I've been out here for 40 years.
Does it get icy?
It can, mm-hmm, yep. It can.
What is the authorized access to that parking lot? The road by Federuch or this one?
Yeah, the Federuch.
I would have to think. I would assume it's coming off of Bellegro.
It's coming both ways, actually. It's coming from the plan up there off of, the new plans up on the top of the hill there. People are coming down there all the time.
Well, no, they come down. I was saying, there's a, I think we talked about this one time before, and the authorized, in other words, the official access to that parking lot for the trail is the road that goes by Federuch from Valley Brook. That's not a whole lot better.
And, you know, it was recommended to me by the township to put signs up, and Nick Pasquini and I have put signs up, and we might as well not waste it our time, anyway.
All right, thank you.
We'll put it on the road tour, sir, and we'll.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Check back on it next month.
My time's up.
No, it's expired.
Expired, there you go. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we'll move on to unfinished business, of which there is none. So we'll move on to new business. First item is appointment of an alternate to the Peters Township Planning Commission.
I'm going to make a motion that we defer this to another meeting.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
And the reason for that is we're going to conduct some more interviews.
Correct.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is authorize the appropriate township officials to execute a Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency grant to offset the cost of body worn cameras.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the appropriate township officials to execute a Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency grant to offset the cost of body worn cameras.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is request for a departure from regulation governing the diameter of a cul-de-sac.
As council is aware, we are pursuing the highway occupancy permit for the purposes of establishing entrance to the new high school and to the park. To be able to accommodate that, East McMurray Road is going to be realigned, and the existing homes are going to be served by a local street that has cul-de-sacs on either end of it. Those cul-de-sacs will be 60 foot in diameter as opposed to 80 foot in diameter, which is the standard. The reason why the size of those has been lessened is in an attempt to control the cost related to the realignment of the road. If, in fact, they were 80 foot, you would be pushing that realigned road further into the park property. So we've been told by PennDOT that to be able to make that HOP application, we need a departure from, authorized by council, and that needs to be done in the name of not only the township, but the Peters Township School District who will also be an applicant.
It's my understanding that the, there's not going to be an issue with, if we lessen the diameter, there's not going to be an issue with police, fire, garbage, and that kind of stuff? No.
To clarify, do we expect a school bus to go down there too?
No, I wouldn't think so.
And the event children need to be picked up, will have to come?
Yeah, that's what I think would happen anyhow.
I make a motion to authorize a departure to Peters Township and the Peters Township School District from regulations governing the diameter of cul-de-sacs for the portion of East McMurray Road that will be turned back to the township, and we're going to reduce it in diameter from 80 feet to 60 feet.
The motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is request for a departure from regulation governing the height of a wall along East McMurray Road at the intersection of Beavout Road.
Chairman, I'm curious on this because I have business relations with the city.
Thank you, Mr. Ball.
And while I'm typically against an increase or variance on the height of the wall, this does seem to be relatively minimal of six inches, if our engineer is correct.
It's six inches over 40 feet. So this is actually a very de minimis departure. And while, and while one doesn't necessarily impact the other, the thing that I would tell you about the developer of this site is that they have worked with us to provide an agreement under which future right-of-way will be available at no additional cost to either the state or the township to allow for the eventual intersection improvement of Beavout Road.
What's the status of this plan?
You mean, the status of which plan?
What they're talking about here. Is that a plan, or is this just a?
It's a site plan, and the site plan was approved by the planning commissioner out there November 8, 2018, meeting contingent upon council's approval of the law.
Is that going to come to us for approval at some point?
No.
I, you know, I was driving by there, and, I mean, maybe it's made, but like, isn't that kind of an aggressive plan? Isn't the residential like right behind that, or am I wrong?
There's houses on both sides.
There is houses? I mean, is there a buffer between them?
Yes.
There's a daycare facility there now.
Right. There's probably a lot more traffic, I would think.
Less traffic.
Parking.
Less traffic.
Less traffic?
It was my understanding that there were people, residents, in attendance at planning and voiced their concerns. Were all those resolved? I know one was related to shielding with trees and a landscape buffer.
Yeah, they, the owners agreed, we built the buffer. There were some stormwater concerns, which we've addressed, and there was a concern about the balcony, speaking of where it is, but we couldn't address that to the one neighbor's satisfaction.
Was there a privacy-related issue?
Yeah, there's a balcony on the second floor that one neighbor had a concern with folks being out there on the balcony. But the owner's ability to have a kind of planning meeting, and said that would not happen.
Well, and if it does, then residents.
Well, I'm with Mr. Lewis. You hate to make these variance changes all the time. I mean, it seems like we're always confronted one way or another with requests to go a little bit, take an inch, you know, give a mile, but it is only six inches. It does seem de minimis.
Compared to some others that we've granted. But the other concern was something about the finish of the wall. You wanted to, planning wanted to assure there was decorative concrete stamp, a stamped effect?
Correct.
So that from an aesthetic perspective.
That's, it's going to be that type of stamp, Paul.
Well, if Mr. Lewis is in favor of it, I shouldn't really disagree.
With the hard rock to turn.
Because I know how he doesn't like those walls.
All right, I'll make a motion that we grant the request for a departure variance for the height wall.
Awesome.
The motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Just conditioned on the use of that decorative stamping. That needs to be.
That's part of the, wasn't that part of the?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Six, eight.
Six, zero, one, Mr. Lauer. Next is request from Pathways of Southwestern Pennsylvania to utilize the Township tennis courts for fundraiser.
In your docket is a letter from Pathways of Southwestern Pennsylvania requesting use of the tennis center for a weekend this summer to host a tennis fundraiser benefiting their organization. There are two parts to the event. The first is a corporate tennis challenge featuring singles and doubles competitions. The second part is potentially a tennis pro exhibition match, which I would assume would be occurring on Sunday. It is the intent of the sponsors to reimburse the township a fixed amount of $4,000, and the intent of this is to cover the cost of township employees, including Steve Happ and the other professionals that are there. In your docket, I've included a description of just who Pathways is and what it is they do in terms of service to the county. This proposal was presented to the Park and Recreation Board and.
Because I know how he doesn't like those walls.
All right, I'll make a motion that we grant the request for a departure variance for the height wall. The motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just conditioned on the use of that decorative stamping.
Right.
That needs to be-
That's part of the, wasn't that part of the?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay.
Six, zero.
Six, zero, one, Mr. Lauer. Next is request from Pathways of Southwestern Pennsylvania to utilize the township tennis courts for fundraiser.
In your docket is a letter from Pathways of Southwestern Pennsylvania requesting use of the tennis center for a weekend this summer to host a tennis fundraiser benefiting their organization. There are two parts to the event. The first is a corporate tennis challenge featuring singles and doubles competitions. The second part is potentially a tennis pro exhibition match, which I would assume would be occurring on Sunday. It is the intent of the sponsors to reimburse the township a fixed amount of $4,000 and the intent of this is to cover the cost of township employees, including Steve Happ and the other professionals that are there. In your docket, I've included description of just who Pathways is and what, what it is they do in terms of service to the county. This proposal was presented to the Park and Recreation Board and they have endorsed it. I do think that this is the first fundraiser of this type that you've actually seen where you're taking a township facility and having it used exclusively by a third party for fundraising. We have done fundraising on the trail, but the trail doesn't close to be able to do that. We have, the tennis center last year sponsored a tournament and a small portion of the registration fees were then turned over to a, a charity. But this is a different, this is a different animal together. So there are people here from Pathways who could explain what their request is and I think, you know, council needs to decide whether this is something you are comfortable with or not.
Is the $4,000 besides covering the personnel is also covered according to the duration of the event in our rule of court rules?
It does not.
So that's potential lost revenue if our tennis center was open and operational for us.
Do you know what that number would be? I don't know. I did not calculate that out.
Was there any discussion, Paul, about securing any separate insurance for the event?
Well, what, the question in front of council is, are you comfortable with this idea so that in fact we can move ahead with it and make determinations such as things like insurance coverage and that, that may be required? But before we went through that effort, you know, the threshold question is, will council even entertain?
What is the relationship with the township and this group? Are there residents or is it totally an outside company?
Hi, I'm John Switek. I'm actually a resident. I'm a tennis player. This is Jenna Ward.
Could you give us your address?
Pardon me?
Your address.
One, or 114 Saratoga Drive.
Thank you.
And I'm Donna Ward. I'm the Vice President of Community Services at Pathways.
And so the, the idea of the event, you know, a lot of, a lot of charities, you know, do fundraises, they do golf events. And, you know, I'm a pretty big tennis player. I enjoy tennis. I met Eddie actually as a volunteer. He volunteered at the Mile and Classic and he had a lot of transportation when he became CEO of Pathways. He asked if I'd help him on the development side.
You want to press that?
I'm sorry, on the development side. So anyways, so one of the ideas we kicked around was doing a tennis event because it's really not, there's not a lot of tennis participation or major events. So as we looked at this, we figured there are two things here. One is it's a way to take care of Pathways who really serves, you know, special needs people in our community. They're located in Washington County. As far as facilities to utilize in Washington County who wanted to be here, Peters Township is it. And so I think there's two parts to this. The first part is, you know, really, you know, assisting Pathways with what they do. The second part of it though is I think the sport of tennis, you know, and so the idea is really to, to help bring in a higher profile. I've spoke to the fan and they like the idea. I, I play tennis to this day because I, I used to go out and see John McRae, one of those guys, play and we don't have enough of that in our community. So I just look at this sort of double win for, for the community. Plus we're looking to get corporations involved. We're looking to bring pros in. So we'd bring all the pros from Mount Lebanon, Upper Sinclair, you know, Peters, and we'd have a Pro-Am event. And so, I mean, the idea is to get some of the, you know, the top regional pros, but it's really about tennis, which happens to really benefit Pathways. There's a really big contributor to our community. And so the idea is Friday evening, we'd have sort of like a pairings party. We'd put a tent up and then we'd sort of announce who's playing who and which pros are playing which people and make it a fun evening. We'd do a silent auction, do some really nice events. And then Saturday's really tennis. And, you know, we'd love to get up to about 120 players, 140 players. And then it would be a tennis event that would go on Saturday. Sunday, we sort of have reserved as a rain day or if we can get a major tennis player to come in and do an exhibition, you know, we would like to do an exhibition, you know, with a tennis player. And then we invite Peters Township players, kids. I mean, we want this to be, you know, much broader than, you know, than a corporate event. I mean, so that's our idea. You know, we've worked with Steve Happi, you know, at the tennis center. We've got in front with Michelle and we've also spent time, you know, with the Parks and Rec Board. But so I, I think it's, I think it's more than a charity event. I think it's about the sport of tennis and, you know, that's one of our, that's one of our goals.
To attend, are people buying tickets?
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to, they're going to, they're going to pay to play, basically. So they'll, so we'll have corporations come in, you know, and sponsor it. Like we do a clay event and Washington Financial sort of the title, but they'll actually, you know, participate, but the players will pay. And then we'll have photo shoots, we'll, you know, each category will have a sort of a champion in, you know, in each of the areas.
Now, I was more trying to understand for the public, the non-tennis player or the audience of this, are they-
So, I mean, yeah, for the most part, for the corporate side, people come watch. If we do a, if we do a, an event, you know, with an exhibition, you know, we'd probably need to do tickets because one of the things we'd want to do is limit the number too, especially as relates to parking. So we think if we do a tennis event, you know, an exhibition, we could probably handle about 600 people, you know, sort of wrapping seats around, using the hillside, and then as you look at parking on either side. But we would obviously reach out to the community first and the people that are here playing and are part of it. And that's who I am.
So you're not anticipating a non-participating audience?
I mean, well, there, there could be people that come to sort of watch the corporate side of it. But the only, the only place, so we're, we're looking to do some, some children's clinics too that would be a part of it. And so we'd have the pros here so we could do some children's clinic. So we'd have the Peters folks, Upper Sinclair, Mount Lebanon. So we'd put together some type of clinic that would be, you know, sort of engage in, not only some of the Pathways kids would do separate, but also the Peters Township community.
One of the criteria that the Park and Rec Board put forth for allowing a nonprofit to do something like this is that it has to benefit Peters Township or people in Peters. Do you have any kind of idea of what percentage of your, without names obviously, Pathways people are Peters Township residents? I mean, you're a resident personally, that's one. But as far as services, what, what volume?
In terms of adults with intellectual disabilities, we have approximately five that live within the Peters Township community. Our early intervention program also services this area and that would be a higher volume that kind of rotates as people graduate throughout the program.
I, I think the thing to consider here is that, you know, the tennis center has struggled since we've taken it over. And I agree that this is an opportunity to market the facility and perhaps get some additional members into the tennis facility. It can, it can hurt.
And one of the things we do is we put together, you know, a good committee, you know, that would work with this. Joanna Rodriguez is an attorney that serves on Pathways Board. Her and her husband are both tennis players and so they'd be a part of it. Gary Weinstein, who I haven't asked yet, but he's the CEO of Washington Health System. I'm on his foundation board, do a lot of work. I'd reach out to Gary. Chase McClain, who actually was a tournament director for Mile and Classic, now works for tourism. I'd get Chase involved. So we'd really try to come up with a good committee that could really do some nice outreach. The Observer Reporter would be a partner, you know, so they would help us to get the word out about what we're trying to accomplish. And we'd work with, you know, obviously the staff here. And we want it to be something that's good for Peters Township, the sport of tennis. I mean, I can still remember, you know, just being a little guy growing up in the city of Pittsburgh, they would bring some of the stars in. I can remember Connie Hawkins and some of the Pirates and, you know, some of my fond memories. I mean, now with all the sharing of information-
Connie Hawkins?
Connie Hawkins, yep. But anyway-
The Hawk.
Yeah, the Hawk. But I mean, I think there, there are the ideas though behind this. I mean, so we reached out to Allison Risk and she's getting married this summer and she was toying with the idea of maybe getting one of the other women players. But I mean, so that's the type of level. I mean, we would want to create an experience in which people can come out and get a chance to see it.
I'll make a motion that we have the township officials continue the dialogue with this Pathways opportunity with the rec center to lay the groundwork.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I don't disagree that this sounds like a positive thing, but there are a lot of moving parts. One thing that concerned me when you talked about parking, because we have our library right there, which has a number of their own events. So as far as coordination, I would, if we're going to authorize you to proceed, we're going to have to be very careful.
Yeah. And Michelle made that very clear. I mean, that's something we'd care about. And I did reach out to the school district about utilizing their, their parking in addition to it. And they would be willing, the timing works out pretty well, so they'd be willing to put it in and would obviously all the insurance and anything else you would need.
Again, my, my motion's not approval.
I understand.
It's just to continue the dialogue.
To clarify the costs and make sure, because it sounds like the amount of time's fluid right now.
We're looking at late July or the-
No, I meant Friday. You talked about Friday and you said Saturday, you said maybe Sunday.
Well, no, I think what you need to assume is that it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, that that gets blocked off because even if there is not this, this pro tennis event, they want to be able to reserve Sunday as a rain date and I think we need to plan accordingly.
Right. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is authorization of the township manager to negotiate lease terms for township property located at 330 Valleybrook Road.
As council will recall, we were approached by Mr. Robinson about the potential of developing the site along Valleybrook Road that the township currently has as a stormwater retention facility. To be able to do that, we sent out a request for proposals. I'm not surprised that Mr. Robinson was the only party to respond to that because this would be a very difficult project. But what he has proposed is in line with what he had told us previously is that he would take over maintenance of the stormwater management pond. He would install a parking lot that would have 10 parking spaces. He would make a connection onto the trail and allow people to use, utilize that. He would establish a coffee shop utilizing the existing structure there to accommodate that, improve the landscaping as well as to create a fitness center. And then in addition to that, he has offered a percentage of his receipts from the coffee shop.
What are these little pink things up in the top corner up there?
These are, this is, this is actually a, a fitness trail.
That's right. Yeah. Thank you, council members. Good evening. Bill Anderson with the firm, Shaw, German and Kelly. We represent Mr. Thomas Robinson. The project has five components. As Mr. Lauer stated, first, it's the restoration of the property to clear all the dead trees, shrubs, invasive trees and landscape it so it's aesthetically pleasing. Second, there is installation of paved parking as well as the driveway. And in addition, those, I guess you'd want to call them pods, those are fitness stations so that users of Airhead Trail could enter the subject property and utilize the fitness stations. Third is an access point to Airhead Trail via a footbridge that will also have a bike ramp for bicyclists. And fourth, it is the renovation of the existing structure for use of a, as a concession stand or coffee shop. To the extent that the existing structure cannot be renovated just because of its dilapidated state, Mr. Robinson proposes to raise the building and construct a new one. And then finally, Mr. Robinson proposes to donate about two and a half acres of his property that's adjacent to the subject property for purposes of enhancing and developing the Peters Township's ongoing storm management.
Is it adjacent to the left?
It is adjacent to the right.
To the right. Is, is there water and sewage there?
Yes.
Where about the power, would there be electric, would have to be brought onto the site?
I can't hear it, hello.
We have to, this transfer, we have to provide driveway to cross that street. So it would be a deal for that.
He would need a deal. All we're doing here is authorizing something and then you guys have to work.
What, what we're asking you to do is to authorize us to draft an agreement that memorializes what has been offered by Mr. Robinson instead of-
So moved. So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mrs. Merrill?
I, I do have a question or two as related to the terms, the 25 years with five, five year extensions, the proposed value of the property. Have you investigated, I believe Mr. Robinson knows the value of property, but from our perspective, due diligence, have you investigated potentially whether the offer works for us? Two and a half percent of gross revenues, what does that mean? You know, what kind of-
I don't know what that means, but what I can tell you is that if Mr. Robinson does not do this work, if you can excuse me, this is what the property currently looks like. And the thing that I will, I will agree with Mr. Robinson is, is that this needs attention from the township. So if all you are doing is the work that Mr. Robinson is proposing with the construction of the parking lot, the clearing of the property and it's landscaping and the connection to the trail, this would be a good deal for, for the township. And so I have no hesitation in recommending that we go ahead with this.
The only question I also had was as far as going forward with the lease. Mr. Robinson's the individual who's the township resident and he's obviously demonstrated his love for the township, his involvement in the township. Would we be expecting that that would be non-transferable, that it's, since we're making this with him? What, what do you see going down the line?
Well, one of the things, one of the things that we need to determine is who actually this agreement is with. And I don't know that right now. And whether that entity, you know, whether we're dealing with Mr. Robinson as an individual or an entity that would, would, whose life would be, you know, extend past Mr. Robinson's perhaps. The other thing is we needed to negotiate within this agreement terms under which that pond is maintained so that if in fact the pond in the future is not maintained, it doesn't relieve the township, it's of its obligation under its Act 530, so to do that. So we need to come up with terms that protect the township if Mr. Robinson in the future fails to perform. So, but again, the threshold question is, are you prepared to accept this if in fact we can negotiate terms that protect both Mr. Robinson and the township?
And I understand, I think what would happen is we would bring those terms to you. We can go back and forth with council's input, like as, like no assignment clause or another approval process if they're going to assign that lease, something along those lines.
And I don't want to get into the weeds right now, but one of the comments, I think the idea of a coffee shop there is very nice, but then I do have to wonder about 15 parking spaces because traditionally what we've seen, if people start having food there and one thing and another, it becomes more used, which is good for us because we get the 2.5 gross revenue. But I'm just worried about further development. And Ed's shaking his head because we know that sometimes people start with one thing and it becomes something else that is attractive and so is, you know, my question is what then? What obligation after that? You know? I, I don't disagree, this needs improved. I'm not objecting to that. I just, there's so little here to comment on.
Well, I would think that most of the traffic's going to come from the trail.
Yeah.
I think that's the whole purpose of it, for one. And my only other concern would be the property that we would be getting. I mean, is, was anything ever been there? Are there any kind of environmental issues or something? That, I mean, that's something you're going to have to, we're going to have to have a due diligence period, maybe do phase one or something. I don't know.
We could take a look at it, but I can tell you this, we own, we own this property right now. We own the property on the other side that, we, we, we own this property.
Yeah.
This is the park property where they want to give us. We own the property on the other side.
Is that where the parking lot is for the-
Yes.
The-
And where this property, I think, has marginal value for development. I think it has real value for the purposes of, of stormwater management.
Yeah, I thought that was one of the issues that we had discussed, that this- Yeah, I thought that was one of the issues that we had discussed, that this property would help us as far as...
Right, going forward, yes.
We're just authorizing them to negotiate.
Right, yes, and there'll be an agreement that will come back to council for action.
If I could add just two more things.
You're waiting, but go ahead.
Yeah. Point of clarification, if I may. The proposed tenant entity would be the Thomas Robinson Feminine Partnership, which is an entity beneficially owned by him, holding company that owns various real estate. Also, to the extent that there's any issues relating to parking, Mr. Robinson owns the property that's adjacent on the left-hand side, so that could be a possible option for additional parking on a going-forward basis.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
I'm going to abstain.
Six zero one, Mr. Lauer. Next item is approval of hamlet phase seven final plan as shown on drawings prepared by PVE Engineering dated November 30th, 2018 for Benjamin Marcus Homes LLC.
Grant Shaw was here to run the council and the audience through the plan. I would point out that...
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Council did see this plan in June of 2018 and approved the preliminary plan, and...
You're challenging me to remember.
I would point out that the planning commission did review the final plan after October 11th, 2018 meeting, and recommended council approve the plan. And one last thing, the final plan, it was to the layout of the planning commission and council saw on the preliminary plan. I actually have one last one.
There we go.
Grant Shiring with PVE. I'll just give you a quick overview so that everybody can remember the specifics of the plan. This is phase seven of hamlet. Buckingham Drive is here. This is Sienna Trail. The subject property is located here.
This is the, isn't this the one where the lower portion of the property was very steep?
It's steep.
I remember.
Which is why we couldn't access down.
Right, I remember.
Correct, correct.
There's houses on that side. We could push.
Okay.
So Buckingham Drive here, access would be through the existing stormwater facility and an existing lot. As you enter the site, you are coming up in elevation to a high point here. The overall site is 15 acres. There are 20 proposed lots. As Ed said, through the final plan process, we had to reduce the preliminary plan by one lot. That was to accommodate an enlarged stormwater facility here. At the high point, there is a central open space. There will be a cluster mailbox unit for mail delivery as well as a gazebo here, so a usable open space within the central point of the development. Overall, there is 7.24 acres of open space. The dark green is the active that I just mentioned. The light green is passive with the steep slopes mainly in these areas, and the blue would be a parcel that would be used for the stormwater management facility. As far as pedestrian circulation, there will be sidewalks on both sides through the loop portion of the road, and then it will be on a single side cross and then go up to Buckingham Drive. There will be a bus stop location here. Stormwater management, as I alluded to, everything will be conveyed and managed to an existing facility that we are enlarging. We have received our approvals from Washington County Conservation District for the N P D S permit. Sanitary sewer will go along the road right away and then connect to an existing storm manhole as part of the previous phases. So with that, I'll turn it over for any questions.
It is our recommendation, as well as the planning commission's recommendation, that the plan be approved subject to the conditions listed in Mr. Zoo's memo. In addition to that, it is my recommendation that the plan not be released until such time as the escrow accounts that are held by the developer are brought current, so...
I move that we approve the hamlet phase seven plan, the recommendations of the planning commission and the condition that it not be released until the relevant escrows are brought current.
Second. You have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
I abstain. I abstain. Or recuse, or whatever.
Five one one, Mr. Lauer. Next item is payroll and bills.
I have looked at the payroll and bills. I find them in order and move that they be paid. I would note that there's one large payment of $127,000, which is our annual insurance payment.
I'll second. You have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Moving on to correspondence. Mr. Lauer, is there anything we need to discuss under correspondence?
I do want to point out to you the report that is in your docket from the Cohen Law group. It talks about regulation of wireless facilities, and if you've been paying attention to the discussions around technology, you know, what is coming is 5G internet service, and what is required for that are standards like this one shown here. Where this gets to be a challenge in our community is that we have a lot of plans and subdivisions that have no utility poles, and all of the services are underground. The FCC has taken a position in support of this technology and has restricted greatly what municipalities can do in terms of regulating these structures. And what we hope, having had discussions with Dan Cohen, to do is to be able to adopt regulations that allow us to control the siting of these as best we can and the aesthetics of them, so...
Well, that photograph there is of a below-ground utility residential development, or at least appears to be.
Yes, but I can tell you what I think people will see is in effect a telephone pole in their front yard and wherever that's located.
What dictates where they go?
Pretty much where they, as best I understand, the current regulation that came out in January, pretty much where the provider tells you they need to be.
Topography would have an element. Well, I mean, it might be an opportunity that, you know, we have green space, open space. I mean, we can try to negotiate that that's where they go, and that way we're not ticking somebody off that they're getting this big thing in their front yard.
And that was a discussion we, right when it approached us, I guess it was last year about this, and that was a suggestion that I had made to them. They were not enthusiastic about that idea because utilities are not readily available there, because these need to be powered. So it'll be an interesting discussion going forward.
Okay.
It was my understanding with this technology, there's more of these than there are current types of tower antennae, but they're smaller.
Thirty foot tall.
It's a network, the universe of them.
But there'll be a lot of them in any one plant, so...
And for those of us that do not have Wi-Fi or wireless telephone service at our home, it is an opportunity to see that service being provided to the lowlands, I guess, of various neighborhoods.
Yes.
You skipped over the stop sign, which surprised me, or Mrs. Merrill didn't.
Well, I was going to bring it up. He skipped over it.
Oh, I just, go ahead.
Well, we saw that the stop sign and sugar can is approved, so that'll make it a four-way stop.
Right.
So we don't really have a timeline, though? Do we know when they might install that?
Supposedly, this approval has gone to Harrisburg and needs to come back to the local district office before that work done. My preference, quite frankly, is that it be done after the winter season so that people can adjust to it. At, when spring breaks, we'll be doing the other one on Turkeyfoot as well, so...
Okay, good.
Okay, moving on to meeting minutes. Is there any member of council who'd like to discuss any of the various committee meeting minutes? Good?
Yeah.
Okay. First item, memo from Seth Coons to Peters Township Council concerning zoning hearing board cases.
Well, you have the decision from last month, the zoning hearing board case involving the flag lots that was turned down by the zoning hearing board. There are no, there are no new cases for the upcoming month.
Why did they turn down the flag lots?
No hardship.
Next item is proposed council workshop on March 4th, 2019 regarding the Pierce Creek sanitary authority in Rolling Hills Park.
I wondered to find out whether that date would work for council.
What's the date?
On March 4th. On March 4th.
I can't be certain that I'll be here. I think I have a trial scheduled that I have late afternoon, and I don't know if we'll be done by then, but if, I don't want to hold it up, so if I could be here, I'll be here. If I can travel on Tuesday instead of Monday.
I'll leave it on March 4th. That's what I'll do.
Couple of things I wanted to bring up under miscellaneous. One thing with this issue we're having with recycling and seemingly, you know, every year less and less items are recyclable, I was wondering how the rest of council would feel that we would set up a committee of maybe a member of council, someone from the EQB and a few township residents who would be charged with the task of sort of keeping an eye on various recyclable options and things like that, and reporting back to council maybe once every three months, just so we keep a heads up, so to speak, in terms of what's available out there in terms of options and recycling. Know how any of you feel about that?
Isn't that what you keep, EQB boards about them?
Yeah, it's a portion of their job.
Okay, I'm all for it, so...
Anyone have any sentiment against that?
No.
I could put that on the next agenda, Mr. Lauer, please. One other item I want to discuss briefly is thinking about the box elders from last meeting. Got me thinking a little bit. Now, we have all this open space here in the township that we take over, and it seemingly goes to weeds, and I know for a fact, back from my younger days, that Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts can all get badges if they plant seedlings. Apparently, there's a tree planting badge you can get. Should we maybe look into, I know we can get cheap seedlings through this, there's this program through the, and I think you're familiar with this, Paul. It's Department of Agriculture, I think, that does it. And perhaps maybe we could identify some of these areas in the township that have gone to waste, so to speak, and replant them, because it seems like the waste, we have all these open spaces that are really just growing over with briars and things like that, and we could plant them with a thousand pine trees. Maybe we get lucky and 150 of them grow and we reforestate these areas, or maybe we even look at doing Peters Lake Park and all these other areas that were wiped out by the ash borer and see if we can get some greenery going again.
I think that's a nice idea.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Let me think of a way to implement that, okay?
Any update on the box elder?
Just buy a big bag of seeds.
We're having a meeting coming up.
Wednesday.
Good luck.
What do you guys...
I asked them about the box elder situation.
Ah, geez, that's not a good thing.
I just note that some of the hatchwork that's been done on some of our utility repairs, you know, they've got water line breaks and so forth, some of them are sinking badly.
Yeah, it's difficult this time of year. They do temporary patches, but until the weather brings.
There's a couple axon breakers.
I did have one or two things, Mr. Chairman. This recent question about the nonprofits doing fundraisers, I had asked if we had a policy because I had never seen it. Mr. Lauer did bring a policy for us to look at. We don't have a comprehensive list posted on the website, and the ones that are on there are outdated, so I wondered what the status of like getting the policies updated and getting those all loaded.
Well, one of the things that we have done is that we have gathered together for the purpose of distributing to council all of the existing policies, and we want to use that as a basis to start a discussion about what council wants to do to review any or all of those.
How many do we have? Do you have any idea, Paul?
About a dozen on the website.
What do you think, Tom?
Maybe 15?
Yeah, 15.
And then we can standardize the format because they're all kind of different.
Yes, they are. They are.
But how often do we get nonprofits requesting use of township facilities?
This is, this request is entirely different than anything we've ever seen where you're taking over a facility for the purpose, you know, of doing fundraising. We have not seen that before.
Well, I remembered one last year because the resident actually called me, and I talked to Michelle about it, but it was for a nonprofit that was out of the country, so...
But what that was, was a tennis tournament that the township was sponsoring, and you paid an extra $5 or $10, and that extra $5 or $10, and the suggestion I will tell you came for me is that we ought to make that a fundraiser for a local charity, and that's why it went to the city mission. And that's what came to council for approval.
So in line with the policies that we need to have updated, it's been a couple years since we did job descriptions on the handful. So just on your list of things to do, I think that routinely we need to look at those, so if not this year, we should be planning for that coming up soon.
The one that you're going to see at the next meeting is job descriptions for positions that are being built, so...
Okay, and one last thing. Shades of Mr. Akerson. On Valley Brook Road, I was down there heading towards Federer, there is a very large tree with the top half of it over the road laying on the lines. You may want to contact our friends at...
I can try again. That only took a year.
Well, if that falls, it'll be on the roads.
I will do my best.
Yeah, but did we cite them? I thought like we said a lot of them, and then they did, they recited them and they...
No, what we, what we did was I filed a complaint with the PUC, and that got their attention.
How they work, about 20 years ago on my dad's property, someone sheared off the phone pole, they came out, hung the phone wire on a tree that was there and left. Stayed on that tree for 20 years. Served its purpose, I guess.
Wasn't one of those trees with the bugs?
It was not a box elder, no. So does anyone have anything for the next agenda? Anyone have anything for the good of the order?
I do have a brief executive session.
Be adjourned.